Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention, please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everyone silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees Meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, the audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items Section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary, Norma Perez, or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone's able to hear the proceeding. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer. The time is six o'clock PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Please rise for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for the silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. I'd like for us to think about all those that were affected by 9/11, and I'd also like for us to think about Mrs. Kristen Tosse, and her father had surgery today. Please have them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. You may be seated. First up are recognitions. Ms. Sofer? I'm sorry, Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the board would join me in front of the dais, it is always a privilege to recognize our outstanding students, staff, and collaborative partners.
President Burdine, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we have an outstanding group of students this evening. We're going to start with our three friends who did the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge for us this evening. Can I please have Najami Awalreni? She's a third grader from Austin Parkway Elementary. Come forward. She won the National Parent Teacher Association Reflections Award of Excellence in Literature, primary grade level. She did that in New Orleans. And the overall award of excellence for the state of Texas in the primary literature category for the Texas State PTA. And her poem was "Hope in the Storm." The poem was about her experiences during Hurricane Harvey. Good job. Next, we have Tiana Peck, third grade, also from Austin Parkway Elementary. Ms. Tiana competed in the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympics in Greensboro, North Carolina. And she earned bronze medals for the 100-meter dash, four-by-100-meter relay, and four-by-400-meter relay. So congratulations to her. And also from Austin Parkway Elementary, we have A.J. Unger, second grade. And Mr. A.J. competed in the Youth and Junior Triathlon Championships in Westchester, Ohio, and earned third-place finish in his age bracket. So congratulations to him. Thank you very much, everyone from Austin Parkway Elementary for being here this evening. Next, I'd like to invite up FBISD parent Nomita Ajawa, who will serve as a member of the Texas School Health Advisory Committee. Oh, there she is. Nomita will be the first FBISD parent to serve on the Texas School Health Advisory Committee. Her goal is to bring evidence-based, achievable, and fun ways to incorporate health literacy and wellness into the school day experience. Thank you for serving. Also joining us, we have a great group of folks here, the FBISD School Health Advisory Council. If you guys would come forward and shake hands with the board. This council was selected as one of five councils for the It's Time Texas Award. And I'd like to say that this award was given to the School Health Advisory Council based on their active council members, the number of participating students and parents, the frequency of their meetings, their reporting practices, number of issues that they addressed, and the accomplishments for the school year. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Next this evening, from Ridge Point High School, we've got the debate team. We've got a couple of members here this evening. Yeah, oh, yeah, okay. Stand up. All right, Brady Sanders, Colby Sanders, and William Shine. They placed third at the World Scholars Cup Global Championship in Barcelona, Spain. I'd like to add that the team finished ninth in the World Team Writing and twelfth in the World Team Challenge. They had some amazing individual awards as well. And their coach, Craig Sanders, was honored as one of four Coaches of the Year. So congratulations to this team. They did a fantastic job representing Fort Bend ISD in Barcelona. Next, I would like to invite FBISD community partner David Sincere. If you could please come forward. Pastor Sincere is the recipient of the 2018 Heroes for Children Award for District Seven. He is one of only 15 awardees statewide who were given this honor by the State Board of Education. This is a very desirable award, and we appreciate all his advocacy and everything he's done for our students. And I'd also like to add that he was part of the inaugural class for the Board Leadership Academy. So congratulations to Pastor Sincere. Thank you for your service. We have one more award. The FBISD's Health and Wellness Coordinator, Ms. Stephanie Killam. She's the recipient of the 2018 Texas Health Champion Award. And this award is presented by the Michael and Susan Dell Center for Healthy Living and the UT Health School of Public Health in Austin. And it's part of the 11th Annual Texas Obesity Awareness Week. So congratulations and thank you for what you do for our students and community. That concludes our recognition.
All right. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, President Burdine, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. Tonight, it is my pleasure to recognize one of your colleagues who recently completed the Leadership Tasby Course of Study. Leadership Tasby began in 1993 as a way to offer advanced leadership training to experienced board members. It is nationally recognized as the premier leadership training program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. Upon successful completion of the course of study, the recognition of Master Trustee is bestowed on the individual. Leadership Tasby is a highly selective program where normally only one in four applicants is accepted as a member of a class of 36 participants. Over a 10-month period, the class meets five times in five different Texas cities. They hear from nationally recognized speakers, tour a variety of school districts, and conduct personal research on a topic of relevance to Texas school trustees. Class members represent districts from all parts of Texas with varying sizes of student enrollment and varying levels of property wealth. Leadership Tasby asks participants to work a little harder, be challenged with new thoughts, and renew their commitment to make a difference on behalf of the schoolchildren in Fort Bend ISD and the entire state of Texas. Tonight, Grayle James joins the ranks of the more than 900 Leadership Tasby alumni. And so, it is my honor and my pleasure to present Mrs. James with her certificate as a lifetime member in the Leadership Tasby Alumni Association.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and congratulations, Mrs. James. We're all proud of you. Next up, we have Audience Items. You will have three minutes. Mr. Rosenthal will be keeping the time. When there's 30 seconds left, he will let you know. First up is Mrs. Lynn Pilcher. Mister, excuse me.
Thank you. Until my retirement in 2010, I worked in the construction industry for 48 years. With the last 30 years as a Program Manager, Project Manager, and Construction Manager, primarily educational bond programs, and also an estimator and scheduler. Initially, having worked with various school boards and school districts, I have witnessed firsthand how hard school boards and school district personnel have worked on maintaining facilities to provide the best educational facility experience possible for their students. Therefore, I began thinking about the differences in programming, design, construction, and maintain education facilities in K-12 and community colleges over these 30 years. And I realized it may be time for school districts to take a different approach to facilities plan and development. School districts can no longer depend on traditional methods of design, construction, and many of the facilities that have been experienced in the past. In 1978, the workforce for design, management, and construction of educational facilities was primarily men whose father worked in the same discipline. These men learned from their fathers' work ethic that had been used during their careers. They understood industry standards for the discipline from architects to carpenters. Moreover, most of these men received their primary education in the same school districts where they were constructing educational facilities. Fast forward to 2018. The skilled and experienced workforce for design, construction, management, and construction that existed in 1978 does not exist today. I understand this. On the score of reality, I have in my hand the Educational Adequacy, Facilities, and Lifecycle Efficiency Report, about 2,100 items. Basically, these are deferred general maintenance items that should not be included in the bond program and should be resolved as they occur. Additionally, many of these items, such as U-Marky signs, replacing literate monitoring systems, can be better resolved with purchase orders rather than bidding the work out to a general contractor using bond funds with funds coming from facilities project management. Therefore, moving forward, school districts in the greater Houston area, including Fort Bend ISD, need to develop a much different approach to maintaining and providing educational facilities rather than relying on bond programs which can only grow in scope. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Mrs. Tammy Marino.
Hi, everybody. Is it on?
It's not on.
How about now? Yes, okay. I want to begin by expressing my sincere thanks to Fort Bend ISD Administration for listening. It has been quite a roller coaster ride these last eight weeks. The GT Task Force was dissolved, but we fought resolutely, and it was reinstated. We were presented a three-year plan that did not mirror our recommendations and in fact omitted most of the meaty substance that will actually benefit our kids. We tried to voice our opinion and felt boxed out yet again, but when we met this past Thursday, we learned that all of our recommendations were put back into the working plan document. We saw the position for the GT Academy Coordinator posted as a central admin position in which the person who took the role would be in charge of not just the GT Academy, but also high school mentorship, academic contests and competitions, along with district duties. We spoke up, and again, we were very pleased to learn that the district had revised the job rec to be a campus-based administrator position, which will be solely responsible for the GT Academy's smooth and effective operations. So lots of downs followed by lots of ups. I think it takes bravery and conviction for a school district admin to admit when they've made an error, perhaps due to haste or perhaps due to lack of comprehensive knowledge. But Fort Bend's team has not only done this, they have corrected their missteps. They have, as of today, done what is right. Tonight, my appeal is this. The GT Task Force has been reformed. Eleven of the original members are staying on in addition to approximately 20 to 30 more community voices from parents to students to counselors to teachers to administrators. Please loop us in to future decision-making before we again wander towards the wrong path. You've created a very viable and strong community engagement group. We're knowledgeable, experienced, passionate, and committed. We're giving our time because we want Fort Bend to be the preeminent school district when it comes to GT services. We want our students to succeed and thrive. Use us. Don't wait until after the fact. We would much rather be part of the conversation, even if it means learning we're wrong, than be the ones rallying the troops later for a standoff. And please, as you look for a GT Director to serve under Troy Byrne and oversee all things GT, please try to find someone who perhaps was a GT student himself, someone who truly understands the needs of GT students, academically, but also socially and emotionally. Some of our kids have gone through their entire school career without any GT service to speak of, and they have suffered for that. Let's give our current and future GT students all that they really need to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. Up next are Information Items. We're going to have two thorough, yet brief presentations.
Yes, sir. The first up, we're going to, actually, the first update this evening is going to begin with Deanna Seavey, our Chief Academic Officer, and it is related to the Gifted and Talented Program update. Tiana?
Thank you. Good evening, President Burdine, board members, and Dr. Dupree. As Dr. Dupree indicated, tonight, we're going to be providing the board an update on our GT programming. As Ms. Marino indicated, over the past year and recently, we've had much discussion about the need to improve and enhance our GT program. Troy Byrne, our Executive Director of Transformational Learning, will be sharing the work of the GT Task Force along with the GT Planning Framework that will guide our future work. Troy?
Good evening, President Burdine, board members, and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for allowing us to present this board update on Gifted and Talented Program. Tonight's presentation will be broken up into four parts. Present the background of our GT services that we have in Fort Bend ISD, the work completed with the Task Force this past school year, the framework that we've built around the recommendations, and then next steps moving forward. So the background, we received feedback from the board listening tours in '16, '17, GT parent meetings, parent surveys that we sent out. And from all of that feedback, we realized that we needed to create a committee such as the GT Task Force. We ensured that the members were comprised of stakeholders across the district. So we had parents, teachers, students, district personnel, board member, counselors, to make sure that we're getting feedback from all areas in the GT services. The GT Task Force was tasked to evaluate GT policies, the procedures, regulations, and they used the Texas State Gifted and Talented Education Plan to evaluate our components and where we would fall. The different avenues that we can fall in are compliance, recommended, and exemplary. From that work that we did last year together, they came up with recommendations within four subcommittees. So assessment was one subcommittee, curriculum and instruction, professional development, and parent engagement was in one subcommittee, and then service design was the fourth. In 2018, we brought to you the revised policy, EHBB, and we're currently working on EHBB administrative procedures. And we'll use the Task Force to review what we've put together to ensure that we've captured the majority of the recommendations, if not all, within the regulations and the handbook. We've created a planning framework based on the recommendations, and we've provided that to the board where the recommendations are the left side of the framework. Our action items are right next to that, but we need to build out some task maps, some timelines, and further procedures based on those recommendations. Again, the five components that we're looking at within the GT program: family, community engagement, professional development, student assessment, program design, curriculum and instruction. And here's an example of what that state plan looks like. So this is an example of curriculum and instruction. What would be in compliance? What would be recommended? And what would be exemplary just for this one piece? So in this case, compliance would be we provide services in the four core areas. But then to take it to the recommended level, we also provide guidance to students in the class so that they can work independently as well as with other GT students. To take it up a notch to exemplary, we would also provide curriculum for intellectual creativity, leadership, and performance/fine arts. So looking at the first component, family and community engagement, our district falls within the compliance range of the state plan. Currently, we have the Gifted and Thriving Parent Series, parent surveys, the GT Task Force, and the Parent Advisory Committee. And we're in compliance because we do share with our parents the services that we afford our students, how do we assess? And we're formative about those pieces. But looking at the recommendations from the Task Force, we need to further refine how we do district communication methods to the community as a whole and to all of our parents. We use the district website right now to share information with our parents. We need to evaluate how we're doing that. Is it drilled down seven, eight levels deep? Or are we more transparent as to what the program is? The Task Force also requested that we provide guidance for students with social and emotional needs. And since we have Schoology, the Task Force recommendation was to create Schoology groups where resources are provided to students to help them in those areas. And then with this communication plan, evaluate any additional needs that we would need for staffing, or can we fold it into the current workflow? For student assessment, the district falls within compliance/recommended. And an example is, we provide assessment to all populations in the district and services to all populations. However, our GT population does not mirror the population of the district as a whole. So looking at the needs for student assessment, the first item that you see up there is to provide a universal screener in order to determine additional criteria to identify students for nomination for GT. And that's currently under process right now in the second grade. We also need to look at how can we identify giftedness and leadership and visual performing arts and slash creativity? Once we've done that, we would have to build curriculum around those pieces and make sure that those resources are found within the curriculum. In addition to that, how do we provide teachers and campus personnel additional tools and methods to identify students in creativity, student leadership, and arts? Of course, we would have to create a professional development plan around that and conduct campus visits to get feedback on how that's going. For service design, we're looking at learning opportunities within the classroom. So do students have the ability to work with like-minded students? Students as a whole? Is there a pull-out? Is there time within the day to compact the curriculum? We also have innovative programs, the GT Middle School Academy that we have, and then GT Mentorship. We currently, in our program, included enrichment opportunities, and I'll talk about how that's going to change within our service design. So some actions moving forward from the GT Task Force recommendation: review the policy and procedures that we currently have so that they model the recommended and exemplary practices within the Texas State Plan. We need to look at how we're using personnel at the central office and campus level. At central office, we've already addressed this, and Mrs. Marino let the cat out of the bag. So we will have a Director of GT overlooking just GT. And then we have two coordinators that serve GT students right now in the GT program. They'll go under elementary GT programming and secondary GT programming, and they will only focus on GT. Currently, they're working on enriched learning opportunities like Academic Decathlon and UIL and Spelling Bee. Those will be moved under another coordinator under enriched learning opportunities. That way, this group can just focus on the work of the planning framework that we've put together. Additionally, that we need to provide resources for teachers to help them do flexible grouping and pacing within the curriculum that exists in Schoology. We need to identify structures that we can use and then train the campuses on how they can use current instructional time to allow GT students to work with each other. One thing that's pitched out there is Genius Hour. We don't have to call it that, but they need time within the day to work with other students on passion projects and do independent research. Another idea was to create a T-Test Crosswalk rubric so that district administration can provide effective feedback, immediate feedback, to teachers as to how GT services are going in the classroom. To continue service design, we've reviewed the GT Mentorship for the past three years. The average student enrollment ranges around 10. And we need to see what gatekeeping is going on that we're limiting it to 10 at the junior, senior level. How can we open it up to students across the district to enrich their options? The Task Force also recommended GT-only AP courses. We'll have to look at the high school enrollment to see how that would work. And then AP has its own defined curriculum. So it may not happen that way, but we do need to look at how can we create GT high school classes for GT students that are at the advanced level? Make sure that GT students are being taught by GT teachers. And then we have a current tiered instructional model within the curriculum. How do we support our teachers to use those resources for flexible grouping and pacing? Of course, continue the work of the GT Task Force. We do have 11 members who've come back to serve this year. And then for professional development, create a symposium for teachers to share best practices, counselors to share best practices, students to provide authentic work at these symposiums. For curriculum instruction, we're talking about modifying the curriculum for depth, complexity, and pacing. And currently, we have the tiered instructional model in our curriculum. We just need to support teachers on how to use this model to enrich activities in GT classrooms. So examples from the GT Task Force recommendations, we need to create a bank for teachers to use tiered instruction for enrichment purposes, develop and communicate strategies to promote inquiry-based learning within the classroom. The Texas Performance Standards Project exists, but not on all campuses at the level that we would like it to. So incorporate that into regulations and incorporate more PD around the Texas Performance Standards Project. Evaluate what acceleration methods we have right now, what's working, what's not working, what do we need to modify? But then what additional acceleration models are out there that we're not trying? Create some pilot structures around that and then implement it into the classrooms. Further action items for curriculum instruction, the Texas State, the Texas Performance Standards Project, in some campuses, they require students to, and this is not Texas Performance Standards Project, they require every student to do science fair, as an example, as their enrichment opportunity. So what we want to do is communicate to provide all of the enrichment opportunities at every campus so that students have choice. And that's what we're talking about here, student choice. Research. Research, how we can use instructional time during the day so the students can pursue passion projects. And then create a learning progression similar to what we see in the Texas Performance Standards Project and place that within the curriculum. And of course, pilot any new programs for acceleration, not just for GT students, but for high achievers as well. For Professional Development, we fell in the compliance piece. And in this case, we require every teacher to do the 30 hours to support students in GT classrooms, and then they do a six-hour update, and that's just for compliance. We need to move forward and encourage teachers to take more than the minimum and provide PD that's timely and meaningful prior to instruction within the classroom. So examples for the recommendations from the GT Task Force. Again, the GT crosswalk for immediate feedback, immediate development for teachers in the classroom. And then the symposium idea where we invite community members, businesses, students to present authentic, and that also allows us to create connections with our community and our business partners. And then we have campus personnel right now that support students at other levels. We need to explore ways how we can use those campus personnel to do a push-in model with our GT students within classrooms and support teachers that need support. Moving forward with future work, we will have the Gifted and Talented Task Force and the Parent Advisory Committee moving forward. The GT Task Force will help us with the planning framework. They'll help us with the administrative regulations, make sure that they align to the vision and the essence of what we did last year as a task force, and then modify the handbook. The Parent Advisory Committee, we're asking up to three representatives from each campus. They must serve for at least one year and agree to communicate between the district and the campus. If what happened last year happens this year, we'll have campuses that don't send parents. We will request that the campus send a district personnel, be it an assistant principal or a counselor, to attend so that each campus can get that information. Next steps, we will lead the way. Transformational Learning is my division, so I will be the task force leader for 2018-19. Moving forward, we have to create further detailed task maps based on the recommendations that we've put together and the planning framework. Seriously look at budget considerations, really tighten up those timelines to see what's possible and what's not possible this year, but then build out the plan for future years. And what's most important is how will we measure success? How will we know we're there when we get there? And that's not entirely in the planning framework at this time. So I wish to thank you all for your time tonight. Before I take any questions, I would like to recognize task force members, if you're in the audience. If you can, please stand so we can thank you for your work last year. And I will take questions.
Thank you for the presentation, sir. Mrs. James, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, so thank you for your presentation. And I appreciate all the, it looks like there was a lot of good ideas and good suggestions generated. And I think a lot of that probably, possibly came from the task force, maybe some from your office as well, but it looked like a lot of good suggestions and ideas. I guess what I observed just in your presentation, maybe you can, it seemed like a lot of this is in sort of the development stage. You posed a lot of things in terms of questions, like we need to look into this, or can we do this, or can we do that? And so I guess, planning and doing task maps and things like this seems okay, but how about like a program framework? Is that something that's on your, you know, what are we trying to go for? In other words, do we have an end point in terms of a program framework? I like the sections that you have in terms of student assessment and program design, curriculum instruction, professional development, community engagement. I think those are all, you know, maybe the pillars, if you will. But could you speak at all to sort of the program framework, in other words, the components?
Yes, ma'am. So the program framework, if you look at the Texas State Plan, what I see in my head is we've mapped out where we're at within that plan. We are currently under compliance in the recommended area. So to move the program framework, what we are currently doing, we will have to look at the language within the state plan and within our recommendations to look at what are we doing with programming in this district as far as GT students. I think most of what we have in there, we do certain students well if we do what we say we're going to do. So moving forward, part of the program framework has to be working with the Department of School Leadership on how can we assist school principals to ensure that they get assistance with creating the master schedule to make sure that the students have the flexibility within the day with some of these recommendations. And then getting feedback from the principals, is that possible or is that not possible? So a lot of this requires further input from stakeholders before we move forward. Some of the program framework that we've built already is how we created a new division within transformational learning. And it was very transparent to us that the amount of work that should have been done in Gifted and Talented wasn't happening because people were being tasked with other things. And so they were being drawn away from what they need to be doing. So that was part of the program framework. First, how do we address central personnel? I think the next steps that I see in my mind that evoke from this presentation is professional development. And it's not just professional development on differentiation or complexity or pacing. It's professional development on what is out, what do we have, such as, you know, the Texas Project, that people should be using that they're not using, and we need to figure out why they're not using it. So that's the other essence. So it's not developed fully because we haven't had enough man-hours to get eyes on the ground on the campuses to get that detail of feedback. So that's one of my first steps. Using the task force was probably one of the smartest things I've done in my career, I guess. We get all of these research evaluations. And as you look at research evaluations, you read them and go, okay, well, this is what you do, but what's good and what's bad, and what are you going to do differently? Or the data says this, and you're recommending this, what are you going to do about it? So using the GT Task Force, I think we've done that very well in all five components and said, okay, so here are all the things that you need to work on. If you're going to work on it, just do it all together. And what's more important is that we've built connections around that, too. So like Professional Development is not just Professional Development. We have to support the service model, we have to support curriculum instruction, those type of things.
Right, so I'm just going to interrupt you because I agree in the sense that you have to have a program, you have to have services to provide before you can develop the staff to provide them. So that's, you know, that's one piece of it, and that's just kind of where my mind goes. But I also want to just say another thing that I think is really important to the board, and that is identifying the students in the first place. So that's in the policy that we just approved, that talks about equity and access. And we don't have that going on right now. In your presentation, you talked about some type of universal screener for second grade. So are we only screening in second grade, or are we screening in other grades? Or tell us how we're doing on that for this year. What are we doing this year for that?
For kindergarten, we currently screen our students, so that's been constant. What we needed was another data point to see what's going on with the cognitive level of students at another grade level. We researched different districts on how people do this because it's rare. Everybody has this issue that we run into. And Round Rock had a plan that they put in place a few years back where they screened all of their students, and they chose second grade. What they did was they norm at the local level. So right now, we use an assessment, and it's normed nationwide, right? So what we want to do is look at the data on a campus, and Round Rock's looked at low SES, mid SES, high SES, and then they have-
I don't know what SES is.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Not SES, socioeconomic status, there we go.
Thank you.
Sorry. And so we'll use data points that we determined from the data that we gather to identify possible points that will allow us to nominate additional students who would not have been nominated by parent or teacher or anybody else because, for whatever reason, they weren't on somebody's radar. This data will allow us to provide data to the campus and say, nominate these students, and take them through the nomination process for identification.
Okay, so that's, you know, that I guess is another piece of it, right? If we have to nominate students, then somebody has to be nominating, and then we have to be, figure out how we're going to do that. So it sounds like there's lots of things still to work on. I'm going to point out two things, though, that are important to me that you mentioned, or maybe you did, you mentioned one of them for sure, and you may have mentioned the second one. The one thing is that GT services should be part of the school day. They should not be extra work piled on for parents to facilitate at home or students to try to do at home. They should be part of the regular school experience that the child or the student is having. So I know different models at different times have been extra projects after school, on the weekends, on their own, and that's not GT services. That's more work, that's like giving another worksheet. That's not GT services. So I just want to make that clear that, you know, when you're working on the program design. And then the other component that I think's really important is the socio-emotional support of the students and understanding their emotional needs and helping them to adjust to working with their peers and working in a school environment and working with others. Because they can be very gifted in an area, but if they can't work in a team, as we've identified in our profile of a graduate, then it's hard for them to work. It will be hard for them when they go on. So that component, to me, is very important. I know of several students who've dropped out of school, been identified gifted in Fort Bend ISD and dropped out of school or nearly dropped out and barely graduated because they couldn't cope in a classroom and they weren't having their emotional needs met. So I'm just mentioning that as something that I'm going to be watching for when we see some components of the program come forward. Thank you for your work, and we'll look forward to the next time we hear about it.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne, for your report. I first, I do want to agree with Ms. James. I know a lot of people think that GT is just extra work. It's not. I know I got to see it when I was teaching, and it was amazing, the thought process that some of these kids would go through. It's like, wow, you know? So it is very different. It's just a completely different way of thinking, and I appreciate that. So you talked about the certification process. So I'm assuming that we are kind of pushing more of our teachers to get the 30-hour certification? Okay. Would you say, I should say, what would you say, just in general, you may not be able to answer. What percentage of our teachers do you think have training in GT?
I don't have that direct answer for you, but I could find out for you.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious, okay. And then the T-Test rubric. So, I mean, the current T-Test rubric is really a state-driven thing, correct?
Yes, sir.
So is there, is there not something already out there, maybe, for GT as far as, you know, that can be incorporated into the current T-Test? Or is that something we'd have to kind of invent? And are we allowed to add that?
I have not seen anything from, through the task force or through my work. However, it wouldn't be another thing that administration would have to do. We want to enhance what they already have with T-Tests and just bring it to the surface for them so that they're not looking at every component under T-Test, but here are the different components of T-Test that you can look for to provide conversation and guidance to teachers as you go into those classrooms.
Mr. Rosenthal, we did similar work when we launched the CoTeach model through special education. And some of the things that we did in terms of training administrators was really developing, we call it a crosswalk when we're talking about GT because the T-Test rubric is well-defined now. And so it's really just looking at the components of the T-Test rubric and providing some specificity about what that would look like in a classroom with gifted learners. And what would you specifically look for as an administrator to know that your gifted children were being challenged or that program components are alive and well in a classroom?
Okay, so it's not, there's no legal aspect to it that we have to worry about? Okay, that's good. That sounds like a good strategy, so. And then you had mentioned Schoology. So is this, can you tell me how that works? Is that going to be where students can communicate with each other through Schoology on different, you know, projects, you know?
Yes, sir. So through Schoology, we can create forums, we can create discussion boards for students to share work across the district and to provide support. In some cases, we have students that may be the only GT student within that class or grade level. How do they work with others across the district? So that would be the social support through Schoology.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, and so my final comment is, I'm glad we're undertaking this. I think it's long overdue, I've said that in the past. And I think that, I hope that everybody appreciates the enormous task that this is, that we have in front of us. This is not, you know, it'd be nice if we could snap your fingers and have it all in place, you know, in a year, maybe two years. But I think, you know, everybody needs to appreciate that this is work in process and that we need everybody's help, and I'm glad there's good cooperation, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that, can someone move that? It's right in your face. Mr. Byrne, now I could see you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So a few questions, and I'm so thankful. I always believed in the power of community engagement, and we are in the right direction. Of course, it is not a quick process, and we are in the process of accomplishing that. And I'm glad we are listening to the community, and I believe it is so important. And a couple of things I wanted to mention, the socioeconomic status. And there are numbers showing that it's always happened, the children coming from lower socioeconomic status, they are less identified. And so you're recommending that universal screening is, I believe, it is absolutely important because that actually solved, hopefully, solved that problem so that we could identify children coming from lower socioeconomic status. Thank you for thinking in that process. And also, I understand principals and also teachers need to get 30 hours of professional development hours and also six hours per year, right?
Yes, sir.
So do we have any principals who don't have that?
I can run a report and figure out if we do or not.
I'd like to, if you would, that would be wonderful. And it's not about, I wanted to see it, but I just wanted to make sure everybody is, you know, already in that category. And another thing, you mentioned something about the GT Mentorship program.
Yes, sir.
And I always felt like that is one of the best-kept secret in Fort Bend ISD.
Right.
And there is a lot of people doesn't even know, and I always go to their events, and I see, I always ask why it is only, what is, how many people, nine kids, 10?
It was less than 10 last year, and it's less than 10 this year as well.
Okay, so, and I know that it's a unique program, and you mentioned about it, you're going to look into it. I think, in my opinion, we need to promote that so that every one of our students have an opportunity to look into it and apply for it. And so I don't know the details of it. Hopefully, we can- Hopefully, we can increase the number. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how that worked, but I, actually, at least you're looking into it, that is wonderful. I guess, yeah, overall, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I'm very passionate about this. And, and, oh, one thing, any, any thought process around, you know, I understand pull-out is one proven method, and clustering is also a proven method. Any thought process around maybe looking into having some elementary-level academy program locally? Is there any thought process around that?
I've thought about it myself, but we have not talked about it through the GT Task Force or within our department. I know that doing the community work that we've been doing in the, in the past few months, that has been pitched around. I've had some members from, let's see, Marshall reach out to me, Hightower, and we're talking with Willeridge, and they, they have some ideas about what that, what can it look like. We would have to take it through different committees at the district level to see what would work and what would not work. It's not an impossibility, but it's something that we would have to evaluate.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that I like to see we explore that idea. And I don't know that, I don't know what's the outcome could be, but I, I like to see that we explore that idea, and so that we can give more opportunity to our children at an early level, you know, at elementary school level. I mean, those who want, I, I'm just saying, I guess, that opportunity should be there for those who want to take it. And, and I know that there are difference of opinion about that, but I believe that opportunity should be there. And also, one last comment I have is, I'm very thankful we changed our, we listened to the community and made the, the, the middle school academy, GT Academy coordinator position at a campus level, and I think that is the right thing to do. So overall, I believe we are going in the right direction, and I, I'm looking forward to, you know, continue to work with you all and be part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mrs. Helliger.
Hi, thank you. Just quickly, just to kind of sign off on what has already been said, just, this board, I don't think there's anybody on this board that thinks otherwise when it comes to, we really want to promote GT in our underserved areas. We've been talking about this since the last three and a quarter years that I've been on this board, especially in, in some of the areas that KP just mentioned. And I know we've talked about, you know, this whole, hey, how do you figure out a child is gifted and talented, there's a lot of other things going on in a classroom, and those kinds of things? And so to me, it's important that we kind of sift through some of that and not let those children fall through the cracks. And we, we have to be extremely intentional, deliberate about it. I mean, because, you know, it's easy to just go through a list and say, I'm going to, you know, Johnny and Grail and Jim, yeah, just arbitrarily do that, right? Which is probably a little step better than what we're doing right now, to be honest with you, in, in some areas. But to really see what those variables, or what those, those qualities that we want to see in a kid, and it, and it might manifest itself differently, you know, in certain, certain kids. It just, it might not be the same cookie cutter that we've seen in the past, or work at this particular school, this particular culture, those kinds of things. You know, one of the things that we've talked about, in our, as a board actually, is about the, the talents and gifts that we all have, our, our children have, and so being able to recognize those things. So I appreciate the fact that you are looking to see how we measure different types of gifts in the talent area. I think you mentioned another one as well, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Helliger. Mr. Byrne, we appreciate the presentation. I think all of us here appreciate the importance of GT, and we look forward to seeing more work in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Verdean, if you would mind, I, I wanted to introduce some of the members of the staff that are here, who are also very instrumental in creating the planning framework. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Clarissa Rodriguez, who's our Director of Enriched Learning Opportunities, and also Camilla Holmes and Crystal Wilson, who are part of the, the work as well. So they're here this evening, and I wanted to recognize them.
Thank you for being here. We, we value all your work, so we appreciate that. Up next is our Discipline Management and Positive Behavior Support Update, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, who's going to open this one? Deanna Saavedry, yet again, is going to open this one. She has worked closely between Academic Affairs and School Leadership on this report, so we'll get started.
Absolutely. Good evening, President Verdean, members of the board, and Dr. Dupree. As Dr. Dupree indicated, this was a collaborative effort between the Department of School Leadership and the Academic Affairs Division. And this evening, we'll be sharing some information with you regarding discipline management and our positive behavior intervention supports. This evening, our two presenters will be Dr. Dina Hill, who's our Special Education Executive Director, and Mary Brewster, who's our Executive Director of Student Affairs. Ladies?
Hello, good evening. Good evening, President Verdean, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Dupree. We hope to bring you a brief presentation tonight. Tonight, we're going to update you on discipline management and positive behavior support. The presentation is, is a summary, a quick, or a brief summary of the report that you received, and it's broken up into the following areas. We're going to be talking about discipline management, where the PBIS implementation, a data review, and the findings throughout the data review, lessons we've learned regarding PBIS and discipline management this past year, and then looking ahead. Oh, I hate all these little clicks, I'm sorry. So thinking about PBIS implementation, first of all, I want to point out that it is a collaborative process. And so when we think about the collaborative process, it's important to know that, that PBIS is a framework. Sometimes people talk about, is PBIS a program? And we need to be clear that it's a framework, and it involves a collective work between various departments. And so part of the framework where, is we're including evidence-based practices, so making sure that we have good, positive behavioral supports and those types of evidence-based practices, that we're looking at data, and we're using that data to be real specific to, to campuses, and that we, you know, approach things from a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach, and that we have that ongoing, that ongoing approach to solving, you know, the, the discipline problems at the campus level. The PBIS implementation, although it involves all of these departments, it's led by the Learning Support Services Department. And so, you know, tonight, you're going to hear from me, who also oversees special education, but the Learning Support Services Department as well, and then from Ms. Brewster, who's going to talk about the discipline management and the work the Student Affairs Department has been doing. Before we get started, I would like to recognize the, the Learning Support Services Director, Michael Ewing, who is over here with his team. And if you are part of the PBIS team and, or other support staff with LSS, please stand at this time. Thank you. And so, you know, before we get started on the, the pieces, I wanted to talk a little bit about the PBIS history and what's gone on over the last five years with PBIS implementation. You know, PBIS has been around for about twenty years, and I know that sometimes people, and even in this district, I've heard comments about, well, well, why aren't we getting better with PBIS implementation? So really, over the last, I've been in the district, this is my fourth year, and when I started in the district four years ago, we really did not have a central office, a department that really supported PBIS. We utilized consultants, and so consultants would come in and do training, but there wasn't a, a department, and there wasn't a focus really owning PBIS implementation, and therefore ensuring their sustainability. So over the last two years, that has happened, and, and truly, last year was the first year we had a, a full team with coordinator and PBIS facilitators that worked on this implementation. So I thought that would be important for you to hear that piece as we're going forward and thinking about the work that we're doing in the area of PBIS. Mary, you want to, you want to bring us up to speed on Student Affairs?
All right, good evening, everyone. So in the Department of Student Affairs, what we do is, we are a part of all of these collaborative departments and efforts that our district has in place to-